I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Hearing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just as one.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence for the victims of the horrible tragedy at the Boston Marathon, and please keep all involved and all their family members in your prayers. And I would also, at this time, like to mention that this wasn't just a Boston event. It was a statewide event. It was a country event. And we had three Auburn police officers who went down to assist in the aftermath of that horrible tragedy. Sergeant Ken Charlton went down, Officer Todd Kuschnicki also in the high-risk searches, and our Canine Officer Jimmy Lundgren participated in almost 200 searches of suspicious packages in the six days he was there. So, we were proud to have them representing Auburn, and they did incredible work, which was considered a war zone from their own words. So, we thank them for that. Under public comment, we have Edie Dow, who had contacted the Board prior to tonight's meeting. She had asked to have an agenda item put on, but as a rule, you know, we don't have citizens put agenda items on a Board of Selectmen agenda. So, although we are limited to three minutes, I told Mrs. Dow that I would ask for the Board's indulgence, and I would entertain a motion to give Edie Dow up to but no longer than six minutes, and she would like to address what she has tried to several times, the very serious bittersweet invasive plant in Auburn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Edie, please come up. You have up to six minutes.
I'll do it fast, and I'll be good. Good evening. Thank you for letting this old lady finally get here. I hope this makes a difference. I was here a few years ago with a branch of bittersweet to show the Auburn people how it will kill the town trees, and is doing just that. By the hundreds, they're dying. The long-horned beetle was bad. This vine is 100 times worse. I have tried to knock on people's doors over the years. Some answered, some didn't. Trees are on every street and every backyard that I often see, and on Auburn Street, in back of AAA Friendly's, this is just an example, Auburn Mall, Packard Street, Oxford Street, Berlin Street. Every day, I look across the parking lot at Stoneville Heights and shed a tear because of dozens of pines infected and on the ground, also all bushed. They just need saws. They cut the roots. You don't cut the tree down. How many times have I seen men cutting down the tree, the very tree they were supposed to save? At St. Joseph's Church on the hill, dozens of trees are hanging over, dozens and dozens of them, because of the bittersweet vine, and it's climbed down the hill to all the pretty little pines. The maintenance man told me that he cuts it from the top. You don't cut it from the top. It doesn't grow from the top. It grows from the root, I believe. I told one of the priests about it, but I got no answer. One of the most castrated is the back of CVS. I wish everybody would drive back there. Acres and acres of trees have been brought down to nothing, and the bittersweet is spreading over to the restaurants, and it keeps going on, and beautiful birch trees. I go along with my clipper. I can't get down the hill. The dog can, but I can't. I called Rhode Island CVS CEO and told him about it, and he said, "The people that own that land live in New Jersey." I also went to McDonald's manager, who was Lisa Ford, and showed her the trees against the back fence, all the pretty trees. When you drive in, you see all these pretty trees down back, well, they were all covered with bittersweet. I showed Mr. Fuller. Somebody cut something. I don't know what they cut, but you have to cut the roots, not the tops of the trees. I called Chris Fuller to tell him something, and he said, "I don't want to discuss it." So, I called McDonald's CEO and told him again that they had some more stuff to look into. Montessori School has a tree next to it that is just nothing but a bush at the top, all vines, and next door, in the next house, in the next house, and that's the way it goes. I lost my place here. Please, if anyone sees these roots going into the ground, even, I don't know where, I guess it's against the law to be on somebody else's land, but you could at least tell the people. Auburn needs help from an expert. When we have storms, many of these trees come down because the vine is pulling them. I have been trying to show people, like 24 Church Street, I showed him 25 years ago, and now it's dying, and 243 Oxford Street. So, I've been running my feet off over the years. I showed the trees around the pond to the highway, at the library. They cut the trees and the roots. No, you don't cut, you cut the roots only. I also showed him the huge tree in back of the library, which has a root this big, as big as your wrist, going up into the big tree. The vine is over on the fence in back of the library and all along the water. If you cross Southbridge Street at the bridge, the fence that starts there is just loaded, and it keeps right on going next to the water, all the way to Auburn Street. The trees need to be saved. Out here, it's right in front of this building, in your bushes. Thank you. Did I make the six minutes?
You did a great job. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have this for the manager.
Okay.
Or anybody.
I'll take it for her. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. The next item we have is an auto repair license for interstate transmission at 68 Auburn Street. Is the applicant here? If you could come up to the microphone. Give your name for the record, please, and then tell us a little bit about what you'll be doing.
Interstate transmission. My name is Steve Fazao. We'll be continuing the work we've done in this town for about 26 years, which is automotive transmission and driveline repair work.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, is this a new location for you?
Yes. We're moving, we've been on Route 20, 774 Washington Street. We are mov, well, we're hoping to be moving to 68 Auburn Street. It's a larger location.
Okay. Do any members have any questions?
If I may, through the chair, I know that up on Route 20, you're pretty well congested up there. It's a smaller spot. Because of the bigger area you're going to have down here, is that going to expand your business into different other repairs, or is it you're going to try to maintain what you have?
No, we'd like to stay specialists at what we do. We have no interest in going to general repair or that type of work. No.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Are you familiar with the bullet points that the DCG provided us on the, should the permit be granted?
No, I am not.
Do you want to?
The applicant shall contact the fire department about obtaining or transferring all required permits. All vehicles are to be parked on paved surfaces. This shall include customers and employees. There shall be no auto repair outside of the building, and the business owner shall apply for a change of tenant occupancy and sign permits from the Building Inspectors Division.
I have spoken to the fire department. I have an occupancy permit. I filed for, I have with me. I understand all the other things you're asking. I was told, because I was replacing the signed placards, that I did not need a permit when I went to apply for a permit for the signs. I went to go do so, and they said, "You do not need a permit because you're just replacing the facings. You're using the existing frames."
So, all the signs would be exactly the same, you're just moving them?
We're not even moving the location of the signs. The signs that they have in existence, we're replacing the faces. So, where it says Fuller Automotive, that sign will be the facing of the sign itself. We replace the framing and the lighting and the wiring, and everything will remain intact.
If you could just allow Mr. Bernie to give the Board some clarification. He's right behind you.
Oh, sure.
Just give him the microphone. Thank you.
That's generally a condition that we include if they do plan to change the sign. So, it's as needed. The fact that he spoke with the building department clarifies his issues.
So, we would include all of these bullets, and then if there were any changes in any other signage, he would need to go to?
Correct. If he were planning to alter or change wall signs or anything else that we're not refacing, the permits as required by the Building Inspection Division.
Okay. So, I think it would be best to leave that condition in. Mr. Simontian?
Through the chair. So, this is the same license that you currently hold for the site you're at?
Correct.
So, is there a specific hearing, DCG hearing?
Yeah, because it's a new location, they have to check out the new, the location of?
I did have a hearing with?
Yeah, I'm surprised, because this is the first time in a while that someone has said they weren't aware of, and this would have been discussed at the hearing.
I apologize. I didn't know what he meant. I certainly wasn't aware. That's why I contacted them, and I went for the license, and I have the occupancy permit with me.
Okay.
Because I did do that stuff already.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's me.
Are there any other questions? Is there any public comment?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the license?
Motion to approve the license, provided all applicable requirements. The state, town, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it, and failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Are you including the bullets?
That's including the bullets of the DCG.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. Good luck in your new location. Next, we have a Class B and auto repair license for Angelo's Auto Repair and Car Sales at 823, excuse me, Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
If you could just give your name for the record and tell us a little bit about what you're going to?
Hi, my name is Angelo Riffano, and I would like to switch the name from APS Auto Repair to Angelo's Auto Repair and Car Sales on 823 Southbridge Street in Auburn.
So, this is an existing location, and you're going to be leasing the space?
Yes.
And taking over?
Yes.
Okay. And this is right on Route 20, opposite the West Plaza. Are there any member questions or comments? We have?
Maybe you'll see B City across from?
West Plaza.
Just right near McDonald's. Right near McDonald's.
The same question that I read before to the prior applicant. There shall be no loading or unloading of cars within the state highway layout. All loading and unloading must be done on the property. The applicant is not to wash vehicles on the premises. All vehicles ought to be parked on paved surfaces. They shall include customers and, they shall include customers and employees. There shall be no auto repair outside of the building, and it's the other, the business owner shall apply for a permit on any proposed sign alterations.
And you're familiar with those conditions, having that with DCG?
Yes, yes, I am.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding that license application?
Motion to approve the license, provided all applicable requirements. The state, town, and any of its departments and boards and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
And you included those DCG comments? Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. Good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
7:20. We have just about two minutes for the 7:20 hearing. Habitat, Habitat won't take long. Okay, so we've just got a couple of minutes for the 7:20 hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectmen, item A1, Habitat Humanity.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Welcome back, if you want to join us. Good evening.
Good evening. Tim Ferment.
Uh huh.
So, I'm here tonight to answer any questions and to fill in any knowledge gaps that you may have relative to seeking your support as we build or rebuild the house on 6 Homestead. So, the opportunity exists to, one, either remodel the house and keep it as is and just get a permit to do that. I think the preferred avenue is to turn that into a multifamily and possibly serve two families, and that instance would be able to have one as local preference for the community, basically keep the same footprint. We're building a structure like this today over in Plantation Street in Worcester, so it's a typical colonial with a separate entrance, single entrance. In this case, we'd probably put a family on the first floor to allow handicap accessibility in a handicapped family, and then a second family on the upper floor. So, to date, we have not met with the member, or for with the neighbors, waiting to get some sort of feedback so we can ascertain what direction to take, and then we'll go forward with seeking neighbor support and coming back in front of you. So, we're really here today to answer any questions.
Okay. So, I just want to confirm something you had said at the last meeting, that if we were to support the two-family home, one of those units would be given local preference to an Auburn resident, Auburn family?
Yes.
Who meets the criteria?
We can make that as a criteria with the ZBA. The process would probably require a comprehensive permit, because we're stepping outside of the guidelines for that area.
Okay.
And a comprehensive permit with the ZBA would establish that as a criteria.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. I did walk the property. It's a nice little piece of property on the corner behind that two-story house on Oxford Street. I guess one of my questions is, and I guess to explain that Habitat Humanity will sell the house to qualified buyers, and it will not be rented.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
My concern with that would be that if you have a single family in one side, the other person wasn't allowed, and that person wanted to sell to the person on the other side, does that not become rental property, and can we handle that? How would that be, how would that be handled?
Yeah, all the houses we sell have a deed restriction with them. They're not permitted to rent the property. We assist them in finding a new eligible buyer who has the same affordable housing criteria as that original owner. So, we facilitate that as a agent involved. That deed stays with the property and runs with the land. So, it cannot be rental property. At times, is that temporary transition time takes place? We, as the temporary owner, that may rent out the property, but that owner cannot.
Okay. Just by what, you know, you had shown us a drawing at one time before, this would be typical of what you would put there?
Exactly. It's a, you know, standard colonial-type look to it, clapboard on the outside, energy star. We go for lead compliant. It's a classy, it'll match in to, exactly, just drove the neighborhood again before I got here. It would blend in extremely well.
And that would also be on the same footprint as the existing building now, or would that be set back in the lot a little further?
No, would use the same footprint and expand it back a little bit in order to give the bedrooms that are necessary.
Okay. My feeling is, just by looking at it and seeing the neighborhood, I don't think this is, be a detriment to the neighborhood. I think it would look great over there, and I would support that, a two-family.
Mr. Simontian?
Yeah, through the chair, I have several questions. Who is responsible for the upkeep on the property? Is it the owner, or is it Habitat for Humanity?
Responsible for what now?
Repairs, things, making, keeping the, you know?
Yeah, the owners actually buy it, probably as a condo or duplex, depending on how we set it up. They're responsible from that day forward for interior, exterior maintenance.
Right. Thanks.
Are there any other?
Nothing else.
I'll just comment that I would support the two-family as well. I think that having a family that would have, from Auburn, who would have preference for one of those units is advantageous, and I think that that house would fit in that neighborhood. And I, again, encourage you to reach out to the abutters, to the neighborhood, and get some feedback from them. There hasn't appeared to be a lot of concern where we haven't heard from anyone, but...
Yeah, I've talked live to three neighbors so far. None of them had an issue. We did note that there was somebody that was quoted in a paper that did take exception to that, and I haven't talked to that person, but that was the only voice that I heard so far.
Okay.
And I do think it makes sense.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Simontian?
Just one comment, because I agree with the chair on that. I would also support the two-family, and I, just from your comments, has that determination been made? It seemed like you, have you determined if it's, if you're going the route of a single family or the two-family?
We have done no progress at all, waiting for this meeting tonight. So, we got everybody on hold, our construction committee, our architect, until we had direction here. You know, our next step would be to meet with the neighbors, would request a letter of support to the appropriate ZBA and other parties. We would get letters from different departments to go in front of the ZBA with that. If there's any financial support coming from the community in any different ways, community block grants, I'm not sure, but I'm sure we can talk about that. We will be doing significant fundraising within the community, so there'll be a lot of outreach going on. But with your approval and with support letter, we'll proceed to the ZBA for a comprehensive permit.
Is there any other question or comment? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board support Habitat for Humanities' proposal for a two-family unit located at 4 Homestead Ave.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Great.
So, we'll go back to our 7:20 hearing, which is a street layout hearing. Enclosed is a copy of the notice sent to abutters and a report from the planning board. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, this is a street layout hearing for Rethel Street. In your packet, we have the notification that went out to the abutters, the layout of the street, the request for street acceptance. You'll see a petition from the neighbors for the town meeting article. This still has to go before town meeting? Mr. Simontian?
Yeah, prior to the discussion, I know it's, in this case, it's probably not required, but I do want to disclose, I have a distant relative on my wife's side of the family who lives there. I have no, nothing to gain from this vote, but just for the sake of disclosure, I want to make that.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? So, and I'll just also mention that we have a memorandum from the planning board. The planning board held a meeting on April 9, and the board voted to issue a report in favor of the select board laying out and town meeting accepting, well, for this hearing, this street. Rethel Street appears to have been approved as a subdivision through the town's standard process, but the developer failed to complete the acceptance process, or at the time of the road's development, there was not a standardized process for transitioning a private road into a public road. Thus, the board feels it would be in the town and the residents to accept this road as public. Is there any question or comment?
Yes, I do have a question, and I guess this'll go to Mr. Bernie?
Yes, Mr. Bernie is here to answer any questions we may have.
I'm back.
How are you? Through the chair. I know Rethel Street very well. I kind of grew up in that neighborhood. My grandmother was on Oxford Street, and I remember the street going in. I'm kind of surprised that we're seeing an acceptance here so much further, and time's gone on. But anyway, that's for another day. It shows me 1,722 feet. That's from Oxford Street to Vine Street at Bremen.
That is correct.
What happened to 57 through 61 that runs off of Vine Street, where it breaks off from, near Bremen Street?
This being a citizen petition, I have the foggiest idea. My guess is that it is, the driving force behind the petition is somebody who lives between Vine Street and Oxford Street, and either was unaware that the other side of Vine Street constituted part of Rethel, or was not already accepted. We actually had a couple at our, at our planning board meeting that asked a very similar question, and the best that I could say is, if they wish to have their portion accepted, they need, actually, I'm sorry, they came to my office, that they need to go and do a similar thing and have a similar citizen petition. I don't believe at this point you can alter that petition to include the additional portion.
Well, through the chair, Rethel Street is Rethel Street, whether it was broken off into two separate sections or not, it would be taken in its entirety, would it not?
No. Because the petition specifically calls out the section of the road from Oxford to Vine, and this is something that comes up quite often, that's why I was very quick to answer, it's only the portion that gets actually listed on the article or the petition or, and what happens if you go and you look at the town clerk's records? She's the official record keeper of public-private roads. She has an unofficial list, and on that, there's quite a few streets that it will say public for X number of feet. And there's a variety of different reasons for that. One of the major ones that happens is someone comes in, and they build a road under subdivision control, or they built it under subdivision control 100 years ago, or 50 years ago, and they got it accepted. Somebody came back in the 80s and decided, "Well, gee, I'm going to buy this 20-acre piece of land. I'm going to extend the road. I want to build some houses." Well, that new portion of the road is private until it goes through this process, and they may not have followed through with that. until it goes through this process, and they may not have followed through with that. They may have walked away before they finished the road, so there's only a small portion of public road. So it's really in how the article is written. Again, it's, because it was written by a citizen, they may have been unaware that that was Rethel. They may have been unaware of the implications of not including it, but it is as it's written, so I don't know that there's a way to include that.
Okay.
But for everybody out there, citizen petitions are 10 signatures for an annual town meeting. So it's not a monumental task.
Thank you, Adam.
Anything else? Is there any abutta comment on this one? If there's no other board comment, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion on the request?
I'd make a motion that the board vote to approve Rethel Street from Oxford Street to Vine Street for a total distance of approximately 1,722 feet, as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen &amp; Engineering Incorporated entitled "Rethel Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, dated in June 1968, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 320, Plan 6."
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
I'll just stick around.
I was gonna say, might as well. The next hearing we have is for a street layout hearing for Perry Place at 7:25. It's after that time. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Did I just hear a train? I thought I heard a train. Okay. In your packet, you have similar information, the layout of the street, the request for the street acceptance. We have the petition, the citizens' petition for town meeting, and we also have, from the Office of the Planning Board, the planning board understands that the select board has received requests that Perry Place be accepted as a public road. Perry Place is a road that has existed for many years and in all likelihood predates subdivision control law. This, in combination with the fact that the road is the singular access to a number of residential properties, the board felt it would be appropriate to accept the road as public. And those are the comments from the planning board. Is there any board comment or question, Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Adam, I took a ride down through there, and Perry Place has been, been long down there that they've always needed road improvements down there.
That they have?
Right now, where those condos are at 2 to 4 Perry Place on the left-hand side, in front of that, that road needs improvement. Further down towards 29 at 32, where it makes the corner, the road is a lot better shape over there, but it is wetland down there. What is the plan to, is there any plans to improve that road? Right now, it is potholes over there quite a bit, and it's not well-surfaced.
I couldn't speak to the plans to resurface that road. That would be a DPW issue. My inference would be that there's no plans to do anything to that road at this time as it's not public, and in order to expend the town's money on road repairs, it would need to be a public road. So I think that it would probably be 2014 or after, before the DPW would be able to program that road into their improvement plan. Again, I don't want to speak for the DPW director. It's, that's my general understanding of how things work with him. Chapter 90 money can't be expended on private roads, and I believe in general, the town funds for roadway improvement wouldn't be able to be expended on private roads because that's, public funds on private property. So it's about this time that they're generally putting together bid packages and determining what roads are going to get paved. So I think it would probably be preemptive to include something that hadn't been to town meeting, and I don't know how much work would be required down there. I don't, again, I don't want to really speak for the DPW.
May I, through the chair, also, 29 is that left-hand house at the very end, and 32 is straight in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
From there, it's a two-lane road. It turns, at 32, turns into a one-lane, almost a driveway.
Mm-hmm.
How far down will that continue? Will that continue down to the phone pole at that last property line, and that's where the street will end?
Again, I'm not going to say, not having gone out there with the plans and a measuring wheel.
Okay.
I'm not going, I don't want to make a statement that is incorrect. So it would be for the length of the road that's shown on the plan, and wherever that happens to land as far as, in reality, would be where they would look to extend the road to, if they were going to extend the road. My understanding, and what I have told people in the past when they've asked me about private roads being accepted as public, is the town may accept it, but there are other roads that have been town roads for decades that are in similar or worse shape. So acceptance as a public road doesn't necessarily bump you to the top of getting, you know, new pavement or any improvements. That's a decision that the DPW has to make based on what other programming they're doing and what funds they have available.
Okay, thank you. Just by hearing that, I think this is just the residents in that street, and I would be very much in favor of accepting Perry Place.
I just wanted to follow up on your question. I haven't, I didn't speak to Mr. Coyle about this specific street acceptance, but I have asked him in the past, because when we have had street acceptances, residents have asked, if that street is accepted, does that mean that that street is gonna get bumped up on the list, especially people who have been on the list waiting for their street to be resurfaced? And Mr. Coyle had stated at that time, that doesn't automatically bump this street up just because it was accepted. It now becomes a town road that will be looked at in the overall resurfacing plan, but it would not, you know, interfere with any projects that they had in the works. If we have a street list that we've been looking at, and we've told the residents that, you know, next year, these six roads are gonna be done, that newly-accepted road wouldn't be bumped up on that list, but it would go into the overall discussion on what streets need to be addressed soon. Mr. Grossman?
Chair, in answer to Ken's comment on the, how far it would be paved, the layout calls for 920 feet, as shown on the plan, but it says Perry Street to the end. So we would be held to, as residents, to go to the end of Perry Street. That's what we're voting on, and that's what town meeting will be voting on.
I just want to be sure we had clarification of where that was gonna end, or maybe for town meeting or the, for the acceptance, they can tell exactly where that's gonna be, define the end of where Perry Place is.
Is there any of the board comment? Is there any abutta comment? If you could come up to the microphone, please, and give your name for the record?
My name is Dennis Bergen. If the street is accepted, there's a private sewer line that goes from the cul-de-sac down to the town sewer. It was put in by the residents down the end. Does that sewer line become public, or does it stay private?
A private sewer line?
Yes.
An existing private sewer line on the private road that would now be part of the public road?
Yes, I think there's three residents at the end of Perry Place to put that sewer line in. And I was wondering if that becomes public, if anyone can tie into it, or does it remain private?
We would have to, we, yeah, we need to check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And this, if I, is there any other additional public comment? So, not to put you on the spot, if we accept this and it goes forward to town meeting, and that issue was addressed prior to town meeting, there could potentially be a request to postpone the article if there were concerns on the article?
Yeah, through the chair, we can check on that with the town council. I think it's a, it's something we don't want to assume, but we can check and probably even get the answer back for you for next week. So we'd like to get the answer prior to it going to town meeting, because if the question comes up on the town meeting floor, we want to be able to respond at that time.
Okay. Mr. Simonian?
If there is a private sewer that was put in by residents, according to, where is that sewer going now? If it's not tied into a public sewer?
It is.
Okay. Oh, it sounded like it just been installed and there was no, that's why I asked the question. I know there's a lot of wetlands over there, so I wouldn't want to...
I think that's the reason it was put in.
Okay. So it is, it's a private sewer that's tied into the public sewer line?
Yes.
Probably because the street was not accepted.
Yeah, but I...
I believe nobody put it in.
Do you know when that was done?
If, if you can hold on one moment, please?
Quite a while ago.
Is there another abutta who wanted to comment?
I'm only guessing, probably 15 years ago, maybe a little longer.
Okay, thank you. We have another abutta who may be able to address this. If you could give your name for the record, please?
Paul Dockry, 32 Perry Place. I was one of them that put the sewer main in. We had to. When I put an addition on my house, my septic wouldn't pass Title V, so we, all the neighbors got together because the town wouldn't do anything for the sewer. They said it's a private road. If you want anything done with the sewer, you have to pay for it. So we had to come here and have a private sewer main passed, and we had a contract to put the sewer main in, and it was passed as a private sewer main. Because the town didn't want anything to do with it.
Mr. Simonian?
So the town was aware that this was...
Town, oh yeah. We had a stand-up hearing.
Came before the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board?
Yeah, all the permits were pulled.
That's, that's kind of where it was going, so thank you.
Because they said it was a private street. They didn't want anything to do with it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Are there any other board comments or questions?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion on...
Make a motion, the board vote to approve the layout of Perry Place extending from Perry Street to end for a distance of approximately 920 feet, as shown on a plan prepared by RB Cullen entitled "Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, Perry Place, filed January 19, 1942."
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Okay, okay. Okay, so the next item we have aboard, I'm sorry, Mr. Simonian?
Before we, before we move on, this is a general question, and I probably should have asked this before we closed the hearing for Rethel Street, but Mr. Bernie brought up during the discussion about the piece of Rethel Street that hadn't been accepted. I'm just curious, because I don't know if it's ever come up and may in the future, where it requires 10 signatures for citizens' petition, if there weren't enough people that lived on the piece of Rethel Street that's left, is there a contingency for that?
A qualified signature is any registered voter in the town of Auburn.
Oh, it doesn't have...
So it doesn't have to, they don't have to live on the street. It just needs to be somebody who is legally registered to vote in the town.
Good to know. I'm sure there are people who are happy to have that information.
Thank you. The next item we have aboard Selectmen Items, and it is the Charter Cable Television License Renewal, and I believe Mr. Grossman had a comment on that.
Yes. The report that we got is some 46 pages long on the cable television license renewal, and I would like to postpone until next week and have the committee highlight the changes that are being made and addressed in the contract, because we have no idea what was and what is.
All right. What was is 103 pages of the old contract.
Mr. Schiebler, if you could just give your name for the record, please?
Bill Schiebler, Chairman of the Cable Committee. Yeah, the original contract was 103 pages. The new one is 44, 45 pages. Over 10 years, between FCC changes and the Department of Telecommunications, things are constantly changing. So as each contract gets renewed in other towns, it evolves. So that's why we, you know, we've come from this to this. Haven't had a lot of time to prepare to tell you exactly what changed, because we, you know, we take 18 months to do this. This was three years.
The point I'm trying to stress is that, in this 46 pages that you've called it to, what's new and what's carryover from before?
As I said, that's, didn't have a lot of time to prepare for that.
Well, we're looking to hold this to the next meeting. We are meeting next Monday, where it's our fifth Monday.
I'm aware of that, yes.
If that would give you time to just prepare a report of the bullets of what the significant changes are. You don't have to go through every page, but just prepare a report as to the significant changes or what's been removed, so the board can take final action next Monday evening. Is that something you would?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I'll make that motion to table it until next week.
Is there a second? Okay, under discussion, Mr. Simonian?
I have one question, and I know we're gonna get the report. So there's been roughly 80 pages or 70 pages?
Over 10 years, as it says. The industry changes constantly. I get four or five emails, you know, a week of the things that are going on.
Is it just information that became obsolete, or?
Yeah, a lot of it.
Okay.
I mean, it's specifically in a town here, you know, the previous contract had the INET that Trotta had to maintain. Now that the town owns their own, you know, that, a lot of pages disappeared for that, and it's not in one paragraph, you know, stuff like that all the way through it.
So there's a motion to hold this to next week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
See you next week.
Thank you. The next item we have is the Auburn Middle School Project and a vote on the board's position. The school superintendent has provided the board with a detailed overview of the proposed middle school project at a previous Board of Selectmen meetings. Dr. Brunel. And it's my understanding that the school committee and the finance committee has taken votes, and so that you have requested, where we have met several times, this joint meeting, we've held several joint meetings and are requesting that this board take a position as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. The, as Chairman Goodrich did note, the school committee has taken a unanimous vote of support at one of their most recent meetings, with the finance committee meeting doing the same last Wednesday on the 17th. I did speak with Jason Tate from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance, and he indicated that any elected board who chose to take a vote on the building project, we could post it on our website. The school committees is up there, and I anticipate finance will be up there tomorrow, and should the Board of Selectmen wish to do so, we would post that one as well.
Is there any question or comment for Dr. Brunel? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that the board support the current proposal for the Auburn Middle School.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simonian?
It's a, it's a pretty broad statement, the current proposal. What, what exactly are we voting on?
Well, I can tell you, the school committee, they actually wrote a letter of support, and in their letter, it details that they support the SBC's preferred option, which is building a brand-new school on the West Street site. They also supported the debt exclusion vote and the work of the SBC that's been done over the past three years. The finance committee's vote was of a broader nature. It really was a vote of support for the Auburn Middle, for the proposed Auburn Middle School Project, and that was the entirety of it.
If I may, but the proposed Auburn Middle School Project is a new facility at the West Street site with a debt exclusion ballot question at the annual town meeting. So that is, that is what is considered at this point the current proposal?
That is the current proposal, yes. The wording was just more specific in the school committees.
Okay, but, but just... Okay, but, but just to be clear...
The intent is the same, yes.
The current proposal is the project that we see here. Is that the middle school?
That is the middle school project, yes.
And the debt exclusion ballot question on the May annual election.
Correct.
Which we, which this board has already taken a position.
Correct.
So, that's the overall current project, proposed project.
It is, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Simontian?
I guess, since we've already voted and taken a position, I don't understand why we're taking a second vote.
The, it's my understanding, our initial position was to support a debt exclusion vote to the voters. This is requesting that the board take a favorable position on the overall project, that the board supports the concept of a new middle school and supports the ballot question in May. So, it's an overall support of basically a vote yes for the proposed school.
Well, just for the record, I think, I think that those two should be separate votes. I've stated it before, and I'll say it one more time for the record. I, I'm going to have to vote no, even though I support the project and absolutely agree that we need a new middle school. But I've stated my case about the funding mechanism, so unfortunately, since these have both been packaged together for this vote, I'm going to have to vote no.
Well, I'll just say that the motion, because we've already taken a vote on the debt exclusion, they don't have to be packaged together, but the debt exclusion is part of this, but certainly you don't have to include that. It would just be in favor of, it would be support of the proposed project at the May annual town election.
Correct.
And could I just have back Mr. Holstrom's motion?
Motion to support the current proposal for the Auburn Middle School project.
And that's what it is. The current proposal is going, is going to be decided by the voters at the May town election. Is there anything else? Is there any public comment? On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Thank you very much.
And the next item we have is the annual town meeting warrant. And before we, we begin the board's positions on the annual town meeting warrant, I just want to state that, that I've been dealing with a family emergency all day today, and I am here to, you know, so that we can take positions on this warrant. And once we complete our positions on this warrant, I will excuse myself and turn the meeting over to Chairman Grossman, Vice Chairman Grossman. Thank you. So, we have the annual town meeting warrant before us. On each article, the board would vote to either recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner, or we can take no position at this time, and we can, if the board chooses, meet prior to the town meeting and take a position at that time. Having said that, the first article is standard, just hearing the reports of the committees. Mr. Kasnovich, if you could just help me out on the overview here of, I believe, Articles Two, Three, and possibly Four, standard articles?
Through the chair, Article Two is a vote to, for the general fund operating budget. This is the budget that was presented to you, that you forwarded to the finance committee, and they finished their deliberations last Wednesday. This would be a total general fund operating budget of fifty-three million dollars. Article Three would be the capital portion of the operating budget, roughly two-point-two million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And Article Four, as we get into Four, probably through Ten, are standard articles.
So, we'll take Articles Two and Three. Okay, so is there, are there any questions on Articles? Is there any, are there any questions on Article Two? Is there a motion?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Three?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Four?
Recommend approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Five, which is standard, authorize the application for available grant funds? All those in favor?
Motion to recommend Articles Five through Ten.
Are there any questions?
Second.
Are there any questions? Do you need a minute to look them over? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Eleven. Mr. Kasnovich?
This has been a standard article. This appropriates a level of Medicaid receipts that are expected to be received during the course of the fiscal year. This article would appropriate a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of Medicaid receipts for fiscal year fourteen to the Auburn School Department.
Okay.
Through the chair, will that one hundred and twelve thousand dollars maintain at town meeting? Will that, all without change, at town meeting?
No, that, that will remain as-is.
That will remain as-is. Recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article Twelve, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreation Trust Fund. Are there any questions on this? Mr. Kasnovich?
Through the chair, Article Twelve would appropriate a sum of money that investment comes due at the end of this month. It's expected to be in the vicinity of eight to nine thousand dollars, based upon our return. This is a, oh, we have a number, I guess, six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents.
Could you repeat that?
Six thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. That number just became available today. That will be included in the motion for Article Twelve. That money is used to offset the community use of the Auburn High School gym with the half-million-dollar trust that we had established for that purpose.
Recommend approval on Article Twelve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Thirteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate twelve thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars from McKenney-Vento receipts with the general fund receipts to the Auburn High School Department operating budget for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen to fund transportation for students to and from who have become homeless during the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year.
Through the chair, this amount has been earmarked in the governor's proposed budget, but not in, not in the House in Ways Means Budget that was released last week. There is still one more set of numbers to be released. This amount is unknown. We don't know whether or not it will be received in FY fourteen. And I don't believe we will know by the time this is voted on at town meeting. So, this may be something we want to consider postponing until the fall town meeting, unless we have some concrete information. The night of town meeting, that gives us some certainty that this money will be received.
Motion to take no position.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Fourteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Section Four of Chapter Seventy-three of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six and all subsequent amendments, thereby increasing the exemption values by a hundred percent for Clause Seventeen D, Twenty-two, Twenty-two A, Twenty-two E, Thirty-seven A, and Forty-one C real estate tax exemptions for qualifying seniors of low income and disabled veterans for two thousand and fourteen.
Motion to recommend, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. To see if the town meeting will, Article Fifteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to the OPEB liability trust fund.
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Simontian?
I know, I know that we had talked about this a couple of times. This is, we're generating this from, from where?
From general fund revenues. This is year two. This is a permanent part of the...
And this is, right, this is the amount we, on an annual basis, right?
Yes, this is year two. We started it in FY thirteen. We would like to continue that level of funding in future year budgets. If we have the ability to, we'd like to increase it as well. This is a payment towards a total unfunded liability for all of our healthcare costs. Current value of that unfunded liability recently provided to us through an audit that is required every two years now pegs that liability at roughly thirty-nine million dollars and change. That liability is recognized as a pay-as-you-go. I mean, as, not as a pay-as-you-go, but if we were to pay it off today, it would cost us thirty-nine million. The pay-as-you-go option increases that liability from thirty-nine million to seventy-seven million dollars. But that's provided a funding mechanism of roughly two-point-five million dollars per year. So, at five hundred thousand dollars, we won't even make our seventy-seven million-dollar obligation over the time period as identified in the report. But we are one of only a few communities that are funding our OPEB, so this is a good thing.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Didn't we already have a motion on that? We already had a motion. We already had a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Sixteen, to see if, I don't think I need to read it. This is to appropriate a sum of money from general fund into the stabilization. Mr. Kasnovich?
Given the uncertainty of the budget, Madam Chair, we have not identified a value for this, and we won't until such time we have a final state budget. The budget we are presenting to town meeting leaves about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and change as unobligated or not committed. We have no intent on committing any portion of that until the final state numbers are released to us. So, any and all considerations for amendments or subsequent budgets will be addressed at the fall town meeting. So, we will recommend at this time postponing this article until the fall town meeting.
Make a motion, no position.
Take no position at this time. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Seventeen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the School Buildings Committee to construct a new middle school on the West Street site. Is there any, Mr. Kasnovich?
Yes, through the chair, this article would, in the motion, will propose a borrowing of roughly, an authorization to borrow forty-four million, five hundred eleven thousand, two thirty-four? Is that two thirty-four? That is the amount that has been approved by MSBA. The motion will also indicate subject to a successful vote at the annual town election for a debt exclusion vote.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article Eighteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand from the stabilization account for the acquisition of a six-and-a-half acre, you know, plus or minus acre parcel owned by the Auburn Masonic Charitable Association. Mr. Kasnovich?
This is for that land acquisition piece relative to the school construction project. Last year, or this current year, we put six hundred and ten thousand dollars into the stabilization account, knowing very well that an earmark would be required for the purchase of that land once a successful negotiation was completed. That has been completed. It does have a value of three twenty-five. So, this would complete that transaction, provided that debt exclusion vote passes as well.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Related to that article, Article Nineteen, authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute the deed for the acquisition of above said parcel. Mr. Kasnovich?
Yes, we just received from town council an opinion on these warrant articles. He believes that this warrant article is not needed. He writes, and I'm just going to read the end, "As written, however, it appears to me that this article is unnecessary, but I would be happy to discuss further with the petitioner. Given that, I would ask that the board take no position on this article at this time. If in fact it is not required, we will have a motion to postpone this article indefinitely."
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Simontian?
Are we, are we going to find out the reason why he feels it's not necessary, or...
Actually, quite honestly, earlier discussions led us to believe that it was required. This just came late Friday. We didn't have a chance to review it until today. We will talk to town council about his comments, and we will notify, we'll notify the board meeting next week. We'll let you know whether or not this article has to be voted on or whether or not we can remove it. We can't remove it. It has to stay on the warrant, but postpone indefinitely.
So, the motion is for no position at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article Twenty, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from, where? For the purchase and installation of town gas fuel tanks. Mr. Kasnovich?
Article Twenty, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Two are tied together.
Yeah.
We actually put a placeholder for a number of articles, provided that a agreement with the Mass Highway Department, District Highway Department, could not take place. This would allow us to utilize their fueling station up on Bancroft Street. We are still awaiting word as to whether or not we can come to some type of an agreement with them. If not, at some point, we would like to install our own fueling station, give us more accountability, allow us to buy in bulk. We could save, we could save money. I would suggest at this point the board take no position on these three articles. My guess right now is that we would postpone these until a fall town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to ask one question. I know this has come up before, and DOT was not in favor of us using the facility, and they had a change of heart?
Well, I think regionalization and working with local government, with state government, is being encouraged today. I think that they are interested in brokering some type of agreement, hopefully, with the Town of Auburn. It's neighbor helping neighbor, so we are hopeful that this will happen. They haven't said no, Mr. Grossman. In fact, they are considering it, so hopefully, we should know in the very near future.
So, the motion is to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, take no position as it's expected to be postponed indefinitely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, that was Articles Twenty, Twenty-One, and Twenty-Two. Article Twenty-three, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars from the cemetery perpetual care account for a match of funds available under the state grant for the construction and/or restoration of Civil War monuments.
Through the chair, if I may, I am working with Wayne Blumquist, the Parks Cemetery and Recreation Superintendent, as well as Mr. Kenny Thier, where we are out tonight actually looking at Civil War gravestones and monuments. This is a grant that has become available through the state, through a collaborative of three different state agencies in honor of the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Civil War. We are allowed to apply for a sum of up to five thousand dollars, and a match is required, which is why we're putting in here the five thousand dollars from the perpetual care account. That will provide the town's match. That would give us a total project cost of ten thousand dollars. And right now, we're going to be looking at the final costs. The grant is due in a couple of weeks. As a matter of fact, I believe you voted on it a couple of weeks ago to give us authorization to go forward. We've identified one monument and one gravesite, as well as the... We've identified one monument and one gravesite, as well as the surrounding granite work around it, and some of the GAR flag holders as well that identify the Civil War sites. So we're going to be putting together a total package, not to exceed $10,000. And this is the matching $5,000 from the town that would be required.
Motion to recommend. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Article 24 to see if the town meeting will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21, to discontinue, abandon, and to convey a portion of the right-of-way located at the corner of Oxford Street and Linda Ave. And that is Inspection Services unless Town Administration wants to comment.
Do you have any backup on this that you could share with the Board?
Article 24 regarding Oxford Street and Linda Avenue. We can...
Yeah.
We can give Mr. Bernie an opportunity to read the article, and we'll move on to Article 25. Article... We'll come back to 24. Article 25 to see if the town meeting will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 59, Section 5N of the General Laws to establish a program by vote of the Board of Selectmen allowing veterans, as defined in Clause 43rd... I think it's three, of Section 7 of Chapter 4, to volunteer to provide services to that city or town in exchange for a reduction in their real estate property tax obligations.
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just ask Mr. Kasnovich. So this allows this to move forward, and the Board of Selectmen would...
They would set the parameters.
Set the parameters for... For this...
For the program itself.
For the program. Okay. And that would take place soon after town meeting?
Yes.
And is it a public hearing, or is it just discussion by the Board? Okay, so the Board of Selectmen would set the parameters for this program. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Did you want to go back to Article 24, Mr. Bernie?
I do. I apologize. You caught me off guard.
Not a problem.
Article 24, a business owner approached the town maybe about 12 months ago and wished to purchase a piece of land that is actually a piece of right-of-way. It's not... If you're familiar with the Oxford Street-Linda Ave area, it's sort of a confluence of a couple of different roads. It's probably been reconfigured a couple of different times over the past 50 years. And this is a piece of road layout, right-of-way, that is really just grass. And this business owner wishes to purchase that land in order to, I assume, add additional space to their business, whether it's parking or structure. So, this similar to what was done a year or so ago over on Old Oxford Street. It's the same thing. It's a discontinuance, and it's an authorization to negotiate. I believe that person either approached the DPW or Town Administration, and that's what this article would be.
Mr. Simoneon?
This is on that corner where Linda and North Oxford?
Yeah, and pardon me for not having the map with me. If I'm not mistaken, Linda comes into Oxford at sort of an angle, and there's land here that's grass. And it's outside... You could actually take the right-of-way for Linda and make it an even 50-foot right-of-way coming into Oxford Street at the angle that it comes in and remove, I believe it's a small triangular piece. And you'd be able to remove that and not affect the actual operation of Linda. But if you look at the assessor's maps, it's actually... There's a very wide corner, so instead of coming in at a straight line, it kind of comes in and has this really weird wide mouth to it.
So the area that this is talking about, is that the piece that's between... I think it's Sun and Sound?
Yes. That's the piece it is, I believe. And there's no... There's no specific size to it, because when these kind of things are done, the property owner is required to hire a surveyor and determine what the actual meets and bounds and size is. And without the authorization to go ahead, the town generally won't require them to expend those funds to find out that... Town meeting doesn't even want to let them do this. So at the point that Town Meeting gives authorization, the property owner would then, out of their own pocket, have the area surveyed, determine what they're looking for for land, and then the negotiation between the town and the property owner happens.
Okay. Motion to recommend. Second.
The chair needed to step out for a moment. Can you take the... Okay.
No, we got to vote on it, that's all.
You have to second.
I can get the second. I can't second.
Okay, second then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 26. Article 26, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a net metering credit agreement for a term greater than the three years with an appropriate and properly vetted partner or acting anything relative thereto.
Through the chair, the reason for this, last year, just to go back, last year, the town meeting approved two net metering credit agreements, of which we had identified the solar developer that had proposed the agreements to us. We signed one of the agreements. The second agreement, we are still working on, because there was a change in the project by the developer. In the interim, one of the agreements that we signed, we're not 100% certain that it's actually going to move forward, because it was for the provision of power to the town at a reduced rate pending the development of a solar facility, also in town. That the developer right now is not certain if they can get all their... The capacity that they need from National Grid to make the project work. In the interim, we've been approached by several solar developers who are willing to offer reduced-rate electrical net metering credit agreements to the town. But we need, if for anything longer than three years, we need town meeting approval. So what has happened is because of the process being only once a year or twice a year for town meeting, we've had to pass up the opportunity to enter into these net metering credit agreements, and the opportunities go quickly. Where there's only a certain amount of megawatts that are developed in every solar project, whether it's here or somewhere else in the state, and once communities sign up and take those megawatts, there's no other opportunity to get in on that deal. So we've talked to Town Council to see if we could come to town meeting this year and ask for generic approval to allow us to vet, as we do anyway, the developer, and then enter into the net metering credit agreement with the developer once we vet it. So this is to not actually identify the developer, but we are working with a couple. We want to be able to have the opportunity to move forward with them if a proposal comes to light. For instance, we did meet with a developer a couple of, maybe two months ago, and the opportunity was a very small window for us to sign on, and another community was able to sign on before we were, because they had previously approved of it.
I would recommend approval.
I'm wrong, sorry.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. Article 27, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspection Services, Board of Health pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Subsection 53 1/2, for the purpose of supplying appropriate legal disposal containers for disposal of household medical sharps with revenues gained from the sale of these boxes to be used to sustain funds to the account or act on anything relative thereto.
How is this... Is this going to be a town-wide program? How is this going to be?
Anybody who's ever had to take injectable drugs, for whatever reason, diabetes or any of the other maladies that may require that, knows that you have to have a Sharps container to dispose of the needles. You can't... You can throw them in the trash, but that's really bad. So Sharps containers, if you are purchasing your injectable drugs from a doctor, they generally don't give you a Sharps container. Most drugstores don't carry Sharps containers. They're difficult to find. So what this would do is the town would purchase those Sharps containers, and they would sell them at the cost that we purchased them for. And that money would go back into that fund so that we can purchase more. So it's essentially making Sharps containers available to the public at large to aid in inadequate and proper disposal. I don't know if you or the folks at home are aware, the CVS on Southbridge Street, right at the entrance to Midstate, in the back by the pharmacy, has a Sharps collection container, where you can bring your red containers and put them in the vault, and they'll come and be disposed of properly. So that program was set up about six years ago through the Board of Health. And I believe it's... I think it's Casella. It may have been Allied. I'm not sure which of the waste companies partnered with the town to do that. So what we want to do is continue to encourage proper disposal of Sharps, and this is one way to do it. I believe that the Director of Public Health is working on a microgrant to fund the initial purchase. And then, anything that we recoup from selling those would go back in for a future purchase.
I'd recommend approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 28, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspection Services, Board of Health pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2, for the purpose of abating public health nuisances and causes of sickness as authorized by Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Subsection 125, within the town of Auburn that otherwise cannot be corrected.
Motion to recommend.
Collection of liens placed on properties for the cost of abating the nuisances and causes of sicknesses will be credited to maintain the account or act on anything relative thereto.
Motion to recommend.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Article 29, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $2,500 to initially fund the proposed revolving account to be established for the purpose of supplying appropriate legal disposal containers for disposal of household medical sharps or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Simoneon?
Is that in conjunction with Article 27? Is that the initial funding for Article 27?
Mr. Bernie?
I believe there's actually a Scrivener's error. That $2,500 was intended as seed for the last account that you voted, the clean and lean account, not for the Sharps account. So I will have to speak with the Director of Public Health about that. But again, the Sharps account was intended to be funded through a microgrant, and $2,500, I mean, we'd have Sharps containers until the next century. But the $2,500 was intended for the nuisance clean and lean account, not for the Sharps.
Take no position. Motion to take no position.
And I'll second that. Do we get this corrected?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 30, see if the town meeting will vote to amend Article 29 of the May 5, 2011 annual town meeting as follows. $998.50 for mapping for FY12 to Musco Lighting Account for the installation of equipment to have accurate control of the lighting on the playing fields at Lemansky Park or act on anything relative thereto.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Article 30, 31, 32 amends previously approved articles for the same purpose. There was a lightning strike up at Lemansky Field that fried a controller for the lights, as well as required some electrical upgrades as a result of that strike. This would complete the portion that we did not receive insurance proceeds to totally fix, because we had a $5,000 deductible for that claim.
Motion to recommend Articles 30 through 32.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
One quick question, if I may?
Yep.
Through the chair to Mr. Kasnovich. These articles here, these monies that the balances we're going, you know, vote on, do they come from other projects that have been fulfilled already, or is this additional monies?
No, these are projects that have already been completed, and these are remaining balances.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to amend that motion to... Articles 30 through 33. 33 is also in...
Correct.
So the motion will be to recommend Articles 30 through 33.
And I'll second that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Article 34, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Wethel Street as a public way from Oxford Street to Vine Street for a distance of approximately 1,700 feet or acting anything relative thereto.
Affirmative to the petitioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Article 35, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Perry Place as a public road, not a private road, or act on anything relative thereto.
Affirmative to the petitioner.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. Article 36, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CAP Article 3 of the May 1, 2012 annual town meeting from a line term Auburn Public Library capital funds ceiling fire suppressant of $250,000 for the following building repairs and upgrades to the Auburn Public Library. Roof replacement of $115,000, windows and blinds, $60,000, carpet flooring shelving, $25,000, resurfacing of the parking lot, $25,000, interior painting, $25,000, or act on anything relative thereto.
I got a question on that one. The capital funds for ceiling fire suppressant of $250,000, what was that project going to entail? Is that part of what they want to do down there now with the library repairs and upgrades?
Through the chair to Mr. Holstrom. This money was approved at a, I believe, in the FY12 budget for certain repairs at the library. They were going to drop the ceiling, and they were going to put a new fire suppression system in there. There was a further study done by the library trustees that considered doing a rehab of the building. And part of that study indicated that it would not make sense to lower the ceiling and do what was originally intended by way of vote of town meeting. So they reprioritized this need and broke it out as follows.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Next item on the agenda is a vote on subcommittee recommendations on bylaws.
Make a motion we table to the fall, next week's meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Perambulation report. Mr. Simoneon and Mr. Ethier? Yeah, I'm getting to it. Mr. Simoneon and Mr. Ethier were good enough to do all the legwork, roadwork, and it's been many years since this has been done. And I'd like Mr. Ethier to come up and answer any questions that anyone might have concerning the report.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Ethier. I live at four oh four Leicester Street.
You wanna sit here, Kenny? Steve Canty couldn't see you all the way back.
Did you want questions? I, I don't know how you want to do this.
I'll start. Because before I actually get into this, I, I just want to have the other members of the board recognize Mr. Ethier. This, this certainly would not have been completed as successfully, in my opinion, as it was without Mr. Ethier's expertise, knowledge, and passion, and his love of the Town of Auburn. This, we, we had a great time. At least I know I did. I, I learned a lot. We walked thirty miles to find these markers, and I heard about, I don't know, a hundred and twenty years' worth of stories in Auburn's history in that thirty miles. So, you know, I, I'd like to ask my board to, and, and the town to thank Mr. Ethier for volunteering his time, and for his, just the way he feels about the town, and, and making this as successful and fun as it was. So thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Thank you very much.
I have a question concerning the markings, and I know we had said that several had not been done for maybe twelve, twelve years?
I think there was probably definitely one that I don't think was ever found or ever marked. And my wife is a schoolteacher, and one of her student's mother is a veterinarian in Leicester, and somewhere in a conversation, she found out that we were looking for them, and there was one on her grandfather's dairy farm. And it was not near any roads, really. It was down on a stone wall. It was never marked. There was no date on it. And it actually dated back to Ward. It had Auburn and Ward for the Auburn side, which tells us that it would, would have been between seventeen seventy-eight and eighteen thirty-seven. So I, I really don't think any of the other ones had, other people had found that particular one. It was kinda, it was, it was an exciting, it was a very enjoyable project.
And those that you did find, what was the oldest date on any of them?
Well, you know, I was pretty much impressed that you could still read back to nineteen fifty. I think there was one that said, it's only done in paint. I think there was one that said nineteen thirty-two, but I couldn't swear to that. And what I actually did on some of them is took our black marker and went over some of the earlier ones. So somebody that's gonna do it in five or ten or twenty years from now would, would be able to identify the, the other dates, which probably in some time are going to be gone. The other thing that I found kind of funny was the one that was Auburn, Worcester, and Leicester up in the Hebrew Cemetery. Nineteen fifty marker. I think that's probably when they first invented spray cans of paint, and somebody tried to do it. Kind of made a mess, but it was just, it was kind of, there was a lot of funny things. And there were a lot of really nice people. Everybody was very cooperative. If it had not been for them, we would never found the, number one would be the Auburn, Worcester, Milbury. There was a gentleman outraking his lawn. We stopped and asked him, and he ran in the backyard and showed us right where that was. Everybody was like that. People had us in their houses. I mean, it was, everybody was very cooperative. It was a nice project. And I also would like to say how much I was impressed with the, the Simoni girls. Mr. and Mrs. Simoni, and they've done a, I mean, a lot, today you see a lot of young people that don't impress you. And they, I, I got home and told Ellen, I said, I hope my grandchildren end up like them. They're really polite and really, were really enjoyable to be with. I, I was very much impressed with them.
Thank you for saying that.
Wow, no, no need for that.
Through the Chair, I'd like to thank the both of you and the other participants for trekking through the town boundaries and making this happen. On that note, through the Chair to the Town Manager, is there a report we have to submit to anybody that may put this on record?
Yeah, through the Chair, I think it would be appropriate for the board to take a vote to accept this, this report. And it does need to be filed with the Auburn Town Clerk by state law. It also needs to be filed with the Town Clerks of the contiguous towns, which we share a common border with.
I make a motion that we accept the report and to forward all the reports to the suitable parties.
And I think that all members of the board should sign the report. So next week, everyone should be available so that we can sign the paperwork. And hopefully, this list that you've prepared for us doesn't become lost in the Town Clerk's office when the, next time they have to go out looking for-
I'll be too old to walk by then, so.
We, we found fourteen markers. And we, there were two that we didn't find, that we do believe existed. We, we used a, a couple of different websites, some other paperwork that Mr. Ethier had, some discussion, debate, and conjecture between the two of us. And there is one marker that I, I'd like to draw the board's attention to. And I have, I have had a discussion with the Town Manager. And it is the marker- Marker number ten, which is located on Federal Hill Road, marking the boundary where Auburn, Auburn, Milbury, and Oxford meet. That marker is, has been destroyed. There's only a small piece left. And, you know, I'd, I'd like to have, have the board, have the Town Manager work with the towns of Auburn and Oxford to replace that stone so that it meets the Mass General Law requirements for the stone. There's just a small, probably hit by a plow, or who knows? But we, if we can take a look at that and replace that stone. The other two just are not there, so.
I've just been corrected, and the only signatures that are required are Mr. Ethier and Mr. Simoni on the report. So that needs to be filed by next week to, to the Town Clerk. So in turn, that can be sent out to contiguous, contiguous towns. Thank you both for the hard work that you did.
The only other comment I wish to make is that we, we will be, Mr. Simoni and myself will be going to Milbury Selectmen's Meeting tomorrow evening. And I guess they're gonna do the same thing in Milbury. And we've offered to bring them to the four, I think it's four markers that we share. They don't know where they are either. And the, some of the people on the, some of the people that helped us to find the stones, I think brought up something, well, Mr. Simoni's probably already brought it up, but in case he hasn't, there are several signs missing, the Town Marker signs. And I never really thought they meant the whole bunch. But what, what they would tell us is that the person plowing for Auburn would kind of shot, shot change a little bit. He didn't know exactly where the line was. And a person, in this case, from Milbury. And it's kind of a, a little district in there that nobody was plowing. So I think maybe that you may consider replacing some of the Town, Town Marker signs. There was quite a few of them that were missing, actually. In fact, the one on my street, Leicester Street, isn't there. But just something for thought.
Is Milbury gone as long as we have in?
You had to ask me a hard question, huh?
Well, in some cases, yes. But there were actually, I think, at least one Milbury marker that had nineteen eighty-five on it. So they, they, they were a little more. The, the last thing I, I wanna, I'd just like to, this, this is a, a letter that was part of the report. And I would like to ask the board and the town to send a, a letter of gratitude to the folks on this list. Mr. John Clapperhorn, he's a resident, lives up on South Street. We couldn't, that was one of the markers we ultimately did not find. But we knocked on his door. We told him why we were there. And he was more than happy to not only let us run around his, the town line area on his property, but he came out and helped us as well. Mr. and Mrs. Wayne Marshan also live right on the Auburn-Oxford line, up there on South Street. Same thing. They let us rummage around their property looking for the marker. Ms. Margaret Naleski, her family, I guess, owned much of the land that is up in that area now. She was so kind as to give us a little background, but still wasn't able to help us find the marker, since it doesn't exist. Mr. Ronald LaFlem, he is on Sunrise Avenue. That was a marker, the first one we encountered that was, we, we didn't know where it was. And that was the first one we actually found in someone's yard. And he was gracious enough to let us rummage through his property, and he had actually made it part of his garden, decorating it and hanging flowers from it. But Mr. Goetheer and Ms. Kathleen Hall on Hawthorne Street in Milbury also helped us to locate one of the markers. And Mr. Robert Grand is the gentleman who helped us find the Auburn, Worcester, Milbury marker that is in the back corner of a property that, as Mr. Ethier said, if it wasn't for him, I highly doubt we would have ever found it. And I, there were two other people, the folks that Mr. Ethier mentioned, who his wife knows through her teaching. And I, she sent that to me earlier today, so it wasn't part of this. But I, I would, I would like us to send, just send a letter of gratitude to those folks. And if we need a vote of the board, I'd ask the board to vote on that, because-
You wanna make that in the motion?
I'm, I'm-
A point of order. We have a motion on the floor right now for acceptance of this report.
Correct. So we'll vote on that one first. And I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So I will make the motion that we send a letter of gratitude to the residents of Auburn and Milbury listed, thanking them for their efforts and helping us. As Mr. Ethier said, everyone was more than friendly. We got a few strange looks. I think some people thought we were there trying to sell them something, but once we told them why we were there, they, so. It, it was a good time. We, I really enjoyed it. And I, and I, I learned a lot. For, for those of you that have spent any time talking to Mr. Ethier, you can imagine, walking thirty miles over five weekends, I, I learned a lot more than I knew about the town that I live in. And, and it was a great time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ken.
Next, we have gift, gift acceptances to the Police Department. One from the Auburn Elks for eleven hundred and eighty-five dollars to the K nine gift account. One from Penshe Mechanics in memory of Dennis Scott, a hundred and fifteen dollars. These are all to the K nine gift account. Ranger Incorporated, three hundred dollars. Stephen and Jennifer LeBroom, one hundred and twenty dollars. James and Diane O'Connor, fifty dollars. Midstate Auto Group, sixty dollars. The Children of Tomorrow, two hundred dollars. Alan and Janet Ayoko? Fifty dollars. Karen Sue Marchioni Reedy, thirty dollars.
Make a motion we accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Proclamations that are on, member items? Does anyone have any? Nothing listed. Town Manager items.
Through the Chair. At the last meeting two weeks ago, I provided a copy of the draft, what they call Draft Phase Two Regulations in the Mass Gaming Commission. And it was quite a large package, obviously. Wanted to just give the board the opportunity to see it. It was posted on the website. It was sent to all the towns in Massachusetts for their review and notification that there is a public hearing, I believe, on May third on the draft regulations for gaming facilities in Massachusetts. Written comments can be provided to the Mass Gaming Commission in advance of that hearing. So I had provided it to the board, just to see if there was anything specifically in there that they may want to comment on, recognizing that it's a broad document. It applies, it applies to everything. And even my recommendation would be that we don't necessarily comment on all of the regulations, because it's specific to the industry. There were, there were things in there we wouldn't know if it was a good thing to put in there or not, because we don't have that research material. But the area that I mentioned to the board to look at, and the area that I looked at, was in relation to what they term the surrounding communities. And my, the one thing that I really noticed in there that I would like to note when in sending a letter is, I think there has to be a greater period of notification to the surrounding communities. The timelines are so tight that if someone is gone for a week on vacation, they're gonna miss it. If we don't, the towns are required to monitor the website to track to see if an application has been filed with the state. And within a certain period of days, I believe it's ten days of hitting the state website, we have to indicate that we'd like to be considered as a surrounding community. If we don't see that, if we don't check their website every single day, we could miss that. So I'd like to make some kind of recommendation that the onus of responsibility not be put on the towns to monitor whether someone's applied, but for the towns to be notified if they're in a contiguous community that an application has been filed. And then the timeline gets triggered. I just think the timelines are too tight, and the notification process to the contiguous towns that could potentially be a surrounding community may get, we may miss the window of opportunity to respond if we don't change that part of the regulations.
Through the Chair. I think what that spells out, Julie, in two oh five CMR, one twenty-five, shall submit a written petition to the commission so that we can get on board with that. So that if this commission actually does come forward, we should draft that letter and send it to them as be part of that. And I think in that regard, if we are gonna be a, considered a surrounding community by written petition, I think we want to be represented on that commission if there's a way, just as a voting member, or just as a at-large member, just so that we know when these hearings are coming forward, whenever there's meetings, so that we can have some input as to what's going on with them.
Through the Chair, I will look at it, but I believe that state legislation dictated who the members of the Gaming Commission are.
Okay.
I think that's already been established, and I believe the commission has already been established based on the passage of legislation during the last general session. But I can double-check on that. If it hasn't been established, we can put forth a recommendation that communities be allowed to participate. I, I believe they've already established that commission. It's already in place. They already have a chair. They drafted these regulations, and now they're looking to proceed with them. But to your point, I agree. The section that says that we have a certain amount of time to submit a written request to the commission to be considered a surrounding community, it doesn't give communities an awful lot of time to actually prepare that letter. We couldn't even necessarily have a board meeting in a ten-day period to get the board to vote to send that letter. So I, I think there's a concern over the timing of it. We may not be able to comply with that request for, for written. And I'm not even saying that at this point, we, you know, there is a proposal in Worcester, and we are a contiguous community. I don't know yet that we're even eligible to be considered a surrounding community. But according to these regulations, if we indicate we'd like to be considered, there are potential funds available through the developer to pay communities, to do the initial feasibility analysis to determine if there are any impacts, particularly to our infrastructure. So I think if we extend that timeline, we may have a better opportunity of getting that written proposal in. It's a little odd, I should say, it's a little odd on the timing of it anyway, and we have to figure out how to proceed. But it's my understanding that the Gaming Commission is still drafting these regulations, yet they've already accepted applications for facilities.
Mr. Smalley.
Yeah, in, in, in reading through, and, and again, the size of it, I skimmed through the majority of, of the, the sections. There, some, some of the regulations, and, and so it seems from, from your previous comments, because that was one of the things that seemed a little ambiguous, was the role or-
was one of the things that seemed a little ambiguous, was the role or, currently the way it appeared to me was, we could be on the hook for some amount of money just to determine what impact there is to us. If, is that the case, or?
Through the chair, I read that to mean that the developer, the proposed developer of a gaming facility is going to be required to put a certain amount of money up front to pay both the host community and the surrounding communities for an impact analysis study to be done. So the towns would not be on the hook for the funding. That funding would come from the proposed developer of the gambling facility. But again, the only way to access those funds and actually do the feasibility analysis, as Mr. Holstrom pointed out, is through the regulations, is to provide written notice to the gaming commission. And if we're not watching that website every single day, and an application gets posted to that website, we've just lost the window of opportunity to send that letter in and even be considered. Because from what I could read from the, from the regulations, there were two ways a community can be considered as a surrounding community. One would be for the developer to notify the community that they indeed might be, might be a surrounding community. And if the developer doesn't notify the community, then the community has to seek permission from the gaming commission. Now, there's been a proposal supposedly filed for the city of Worcester, and we were not notified by the developer, so that would then default to the next opportunity, which would be for us to send a written letter.
Okay, through the chair, if, I don't know if it, if this will impact us any or not, but on page, let's see, on 205 CMR 114.03, "Community Disbursements," sounds like it needs a definition of what those disbursements are going to be. It says, "Application fee for gaming like shall be used to reimburse the host and surrounding municipalities in accordance with 205 CMR 114.03 for the cost of determining the impact of proposed gaming establishment in a negotiated community impact mitigation agreement." So it sounds like we are not going to be the host city, but, you know, it's going to impact us, whether there's going to be streets, it could be even public safety, it could be a numer, multitude of things. So I guess, I guess we need to get some sort of a definition on what that actually is.
Yeah, through the chair, correct. We, in the case of a proposal, unless a proposal is proposed in your town, that town is not considered a host community. So the host community is the town in which the proposal is planned to be built. The surrounding communities don't necessarily have to be a contiguous community, but chances are, would be a contiguous community. And that is, it's my understanding, reading this, again, these are complicated, so I'm reading what you're reading as well, and trying to get through it, but from my understanding of it is that, once we had an impact study done to determine what those impacts are, then we would have the opportunity through the Board of Selectment and Town Administration to then negotiate a surrounding community agreement with the developer. And that has not been outlined yet, because I think they're basing it on that impact study that the developer would have to pay us to do.
Again, then we need that definition, so it's kind of like, let's throw it in the air and see where it lands.
It's, there are a lot of variables in this, because I think, again, they're, they're coming up with the regulations, I believe that the gaming commission needs to push this through fairly quickly because of the guidelines that state legislation made for the gaming commission and for the acceptance of these applications. So that's why they've put these regulations out there for review and public comment. I think, under the host community aspect of it, there are definitely some concerns. At this point, we have not been a proposed, we haven't been approached by anyone who has suggested that they were going to be putting an application in with the funding, four hundred thousand dollars that's required to be put in with the application. So I think at this point, it's safe to say, if anything, we would only be considered a surrounding community, not a host community.
I guess, through the chair, I would only ask, if you hear rumblings, to get back to us, so that we can, you know, visit this again.
Through the chair, absolutely, and I would tell you, we were, Ed Casanova and myself did meet, oh, maybe a year ago, with a landowner in town who had been approached by someone who was potentially considering a gaming proposal, and left, you know, explained to us what they were trying to do. We explained to them that the regulations were soon to come out, but we followed state law and under state law, there was a certain notification period that the town would have to be given, and that never materialized. It just, they did not come back, it was not something that had any legs to it, it was just something that they were potentially exploring. My assumption is they probably either couldn't get a developer, or this wasn't the best location for them to move forward, so they didn't choose it. But, and that is the last time we approached, and that was well over a year ago, it was actually prior to the Mass Gaming Commission being established.
Thank you.
And the next item is intermunicipal agreement for 2013 CIC grant.
Through the chair, last year, in 2012, Auburn was one of thirteen communities that applied for and received a grant to set up a regional stormwater management program, and that grant is underway. And because that grant was so successful, we were eligible to proceed and apply for Phase Two of that program, which would allow us to continue the work on the regional stormwater management program. The program was so successful, and the scope of services was so attractive, that we now have thirty communities that have joined this initiative with us, not just thirteen. Initially, we were awarded, I believe, two hundred thousand dollars from the state for this thirty-community collaborative. That amount was reduced with recent cuts by the governor, NRC cuts by the governor a couple of months ago. So that amount was reduced to, I believe it's a hundred and fifteen thousand, for a scope of services for thirty communities, that we had initially gone out and got quotes for and put in for two hundred thousand dollars, which is the cost. So all thirty communities have been working together and decided that we would like to continue with the full scope of services, using the state grant to fund some fifty-five, sixty percent of it, and have the communities in an even share, not based on population, just based on the numbers, divide the remainder between all the communities. So each community's share to participate would be two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. And that would allow us to go forward with the full scope of services as initially approved by the state. So in order to do that, each community is being asked to, first of all, just to go forward and do the grant at all, we have to have an intermunicipal agreement with the host community. Each regional project across the state can only have one host community, and Spencer was kind enough to step up to the plate and become the host community, and they are managing the whole grant. So therefore, we would enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Spencer to enable us to participate in the grant, as we did receive board approval and apply for and receive the grant. And then the two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars would come from the stormwater management fund, so we do have the funds.
In the current year's budget.
I think for two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, it's, if that is our minimal, that is our only cost to this, this is now going on the second year of this program, it's, it's a bargain, so to speak, for what we're getting. We're getting a lot of value out of participating in this regional project.
Have the motion to approve?
Through.
You have another question?
Yeah, I do, I have another question here. In this document we have here in front of us, it says, "In order to fund all the grant project tasks, towns must contribute, contribute matching funds," and it's an available project budget in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Is that going to be, we have to match that with two hundred thousand dollars? Am I reading it that way?
Through the chair, no, the, the overall grant, the regional CIC grant, required a match which was also in kind. So any of the services that we're already providing was used by the state to determine our match, so there was no financial match that was acquired. The money that we do have to put up now to participate in the program with a scope of services as outlined is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, that's it. The, and that's for each of the thirty communities.
Okay, thank you. I make the motion, we vote to approve this, and have the town manager execute the grants for the intermunicipal agreement for 2013 CIC grant.
Spencer.
A big pardon?
Spencer. Right, it goes to Spencer?
It is with Spencer, and it needs to be signed by each member of the board. Or the, the members of the board that are voting.
You need Spencer in the motion.
Yes.
You need Spencer in the motion?
I believe so.
Or is it just on our portion of?
I think you need to make a motion to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Spencer. We don't need to have, it's already in there that our share of the matching funds is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, so that, that's already in the IMA. So if you just take a vote to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Spencer for the regional CIC grant, everything else is outlined in the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. An update on the Independence Day celebration.
If you want to each, on the right side, the chairman, so blah, as, we're just the chairman of the vote.
I'll leave that blank.
You're acting as chair.
You're acting as chair, though, so I think it's okay.
Probably not. You want, you want my copy?
That way Sharon won't have to fill out copies for Milbury tomorrow.
Yep. That's great. There you go.
The next item on the agenda is an update on Independence Day celebration.
Through the chair, this is just an update to let you know, this year, we're going to try something different with the Independence Day celebration. We are moving forward with, with, actually relocating the Independence Day celebration from Lemansky Park up to the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex. There are a couple of reasons for doing so, we think that the parking situation will be much better. We have had the state fire marshal meet with our fire chief and go out and look at the site for the launch, which will be over in the so-called cornfield behind, right, behind the facility. And it is safe to have the fireworks there. We would need to cordon off an area, obviously, just like we would at Lemansky, within which nothing could be grown or on the ground for safety purposes. And the fireworks would be very visible from the Pappas Recreation Complex. At the same time, we could have a concert at the pavilion at Pappas prior to the fireworks. So right now, we have signed a contract with the fireworks provider, Atlas, which is the one that comes in every year to do this, and we're going to have them on July 3rd, which is the night before the 4th, with the rain date being July 5th. The reason we didn't do a rain date on the 4th is the fireworks were another thirty-five hundred dollars to have them on the 4th. So the town has always avoided that extra cost for having it on the 4th and gone around the dates. Last year, I think we actually had it on the 30th. So we were able to get a slot confirmed for the 3rd for the fireworks, with the rain date of the 5th. And the other change, so there were two changes, one being the location up at the Pappas Complex, and we did run this by the Oversight Committee at the, at the Pappas Complex, and they were supportive of this change. And the other change would be that we've noticed over the last few years, the attendance of the public at the events during the day, Independence Day celebrations, has really fallen off. The parade used to be very well attended, that's not as well attended. We have a lot of vendors who come and sell goods and, and food, and they, most of them expressed a concern last year that they just didn't have the people coming through to make it worth their while to set up. So we're trying to look, we still want to have the event, we just want to make some changes that might draw more people. So what we're looking to do this year, we're going to give it a try, is to have the events from four or five o'clock in the afternoon on, as opposed to having some from ten to, excuse me, twelve to two, then a six-hour gap, and then having people come back at night, because I think we're losing people. So we're looking to maybe condense the activities and have them in the four, start in the four to five range, still have a parade, have the parade probably go from the senior center into the ball field, just like last week with the Little League Parade. And then still have some of the same events and have some vendors, but it would shorten the time that the vendors would have to set up, it wouldn't be in the heat of the day, and we're hoping that that might increase the attendance at some of the events and give some support to the vendors. So it's just an update to let you know, we'll, we'll have the specific times after, but we just thought it would be worth a look at the whole event, and how can we improve it, and how can we enhance it, so we get better participation in it.
In the preliminary agenda, in the revised agenda, we had an item under 7D, Central Mass Homeland Security Grant Funds, is that something that was left out of the completed one?
Through the chair, yes, I have, I see that on the agenda, I just don't see it in the detailed agenda, so thanks for saying that. Yes, I just, this is just an update, we don't need any approval. I just wanted to let you know that each town, the Central Mass Homeland Security Council, which I am the, I am the government representative on that for the, for the region of seventy communities, the Central Mass Regional Homeland Security Council voted to take the unexpendable balances out of fiscal year 10, and instead of making the grant competitive for the use of those funds, they voted to take a million dollars and divide it evenly amongst the communities that are participants in the Central Mass Council. And each community, based on population from the 2010 census, received a specific amount that they could spend on any authorized equipment, on the authorized equipment list under Homeland Security, which is great. So we received eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars in grant funds. We have until this week to get our, our invoice and our orders in electronically, and then we'll get the equipment. So I circulated the equipment list to the police chief, the fire chief, and the emergency management director, who all collectively got together and identified items that they really need off of that list. And we're all set to go and put that order in this week. So I just wanted to let you know that happened, it's quite a significant amount of money to get, eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And again, it's just allocated, we don't have to, it's not competitive, that is ours to have.
Through the chair, excuse me, on that grant, it sounds like we've got a lot of equipment coming. It just reminds me of what Mr. Plutukas had brought to us on our last meeting, that there's a lot of surplus coming back from the service from across the water and, across the ocean. And I don't know if there's anything we could ever see down the road that we might be able to get some of that surplus and be part of, you know, purchasing some of that equipment for grant, for the, with the grant.
Yeah, on this particular grant, and you may recall from your days as the emergency management director, when we get the emergency management grants, we're required to purchase equipment off of an, the AEL, the authorized equipment list from the federal government. So they provided the list to us, and we can't go outside of that list. We have to purchase off of that list. It's a homeland, federal homeland security-approved equipment list. But there are opportunities in the future, as you mentioned, yes, we are notified when there are government surplus sales. We receive notification of the sales, and we can actually look on it and see if there's any equipment in there that we want to purchase our bid on.
Great, thank you.
So we can definitely watch it, we just can't use these funds for that.
Great.
And then...
Oh, I, I wanted, I just wanted to jump back to the Independence Day item for a second, and I believe it was Independence Day, and I'm sure Mr. Grossman and Mr. Holstrom, who have lived in town longer than I have, comment, but several residents have commented to me that some of the competitive activities that the town used to have years ago, that have gone by the wayside, grease pole, things like that, are part of the reason why a lot of folks stopped going. So I, just, you know, since you're looking at, you know, changing around where, what we've been doing the last few years, some of those old things that were town favorites may be worth looking at, looking into going forward.
Yep, I think, I agree, you know, we want to look at what used to work and what used to be successful, maybe the reasons why those were ultimately stopped, you know, was it a liability issue, was it a concern about insurance? I, I don't know the reason for it, but we can look into it. And then also looking to see if there's maybe any new ideas of some things that we could try. I think having the opportunity to have it at a different location provides some unique options for us. In other words, we'll now be able to have a concert as the fireworks, or right before the fireworks go off, which is, you know, a great idea. And they did that at Lemansky, it just wasn't, the staging wasn't set up as nicely as, as it could be now at, at Pappas with the pavilion. So there's opportunities for some different things that we can look at. We just, we want to keep it new, exciting, keep people coming, and then keep the old standbys that do keep people coming. And the parade, everyone loves the parade, but the time of day didn't seem to be conducive because some people didn't want to come at ten or eleven in the morning and then come back again eight hours later. And they're, and the vendors were sitting outside with all their products in the heat, and there was nobody there because of that gap in time. You know, and as you know, last year was probably ninety-five degrees in the heat of the day, not a lot of shade, we had a couple of fainting spell incidences that occurred because of the heat, so we're trying to avoid that and have it a little later. So we can look into that. Through the chair, there's one other item that's not on here, I just want to make a mention of. of. On May 8th, and we will have an opportunity to say it again next week, but to start letting people know, the senior center always holds a candidate's form every year, and this year it is on Wednesday, May 8th at 9:30 a.m. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. I don't have any other ones.
Agenda item eight, tabled items that are on. Nine public comments. Does anyone have any public comments? Mr. Smalley.
Not a public comment, but I'm just, before we wrap up, if, if anyone else is not going to keep the copy, I'll take them because it will save us having to print out. I wanted to bring copies tomorrow night when Mr. Ethier and I go to the Milbury Board, so it, it'll save us having to print all the copies if they're just going to get tossed.
Through the chair.
All right, that's fine.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, we, yes, we are meeting next Monday night, but next Tuesday, there is a primary to be held in town that there hasn't been much mention of because of everything else that's been going on, especially the, you know, the bombings in Boston last week. And just want to let everyone know that on the 30th, we have a primary election. And two, this morning, I watched our town manager, Julie Jacobson, really stand up proud for the town of Auburn and gave everyone information as to what's going on, and there's a lot of excitement going on in the town of Auburn, and things have changed and they weren't like they were 10 or 15 years ago. And she represented the town very well.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. It was a pleasure, and I want to thank WTAD for asking me to do that. They have a new segment on, it's 5:80 a.m., and they have something called 10 Minutes in Your Town. And once a week, they're profiling different communities. So they did reach out and ask me if I'd come on. So of course, I had a list of things that I wanted to get in there, and you got to talk fast when you have seven minutes.
Yeah.
So it was a good opportunity, but, and they did make the offer that anytime we have an issue or something that's going on, we're certainly welcome to go on and talk about it. We don't have to wait for them to reach out. So they've been a good community partner.
Okay. Minutes, we have none. We'll address a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye as a vote.
Thank you.